Councilman Cisco will be giving our invocation this morning and leading us in the pledge to allegiance. Would you please stand?
Let's pray. I, dear Father, we thank you for this day, the glorious day you give us every day, dear God, and we appreciate everything you give to us, all the blessings, dear Father, especially the blessing of life. Father, this morning, this council and mayor is here to make decisions that pertain to our city. We ask you to give us wisdom and let us do the right thing for the people there. Always be with us, dear Lord, and be with our employees and go out every day, our police, our file, the whole group, Father, and help them to do their job that they do, and we're so thankful for them, dear God. Lord, we ask you to be with our country and our state. We need love now, Father. We need to come back together. We need to be together, dear God. Lord, thank you for your love. You're in Christ's love. We love you both very much, Lord. And, Lord, we thank you for Christ's sacrifice, for the opportunity we have for forgiveness of sin. Go with us now. Help us to do the right things, dear God. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Looking at the agenda of the roll call, Madam Secretary, I think we can record that all members are present with the exception of Councilman Rahm. On the approval of the minutes, if there are no objections, we will approve those. It's written. Proclamations, we have none. But first of all, Johnny Dodd, you have some special guests here, don't you, Councilman Dodd, that you'd like to recognize?
Yes, we do. We have the traveling league champion JCM Cougars, not JCM Cougar, Cougar Nation. He's got that JCM. We'd like to ask them to come up, and young men in Atlanta, across the front here. We would like to say, this is our future. We'd like to thank the coaches. And can I ask the parents to please stand? Let's give them a hand. Get the guys to come across the front and get the coaches to please come up to the podium, please. Coach Clark, could you please come up front? Tony?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to say thank you to everybody, especially Councilman Dodd, for recognizing us and our young men. They worked very hard this year. We won one championship, the Northwest Tennessee Football Association, and this weekend we'll be playing for a second championship. It'll be in Haywood County at their stadium, and we'll be going against the Deezles, who we already beat earlier this season. So we're looking forward to bringing home a second trophy this year. I'd like to thank all my other coaches, Coach Nick Stafford, Coach Keith Anderson, Coach Chris, and thank you to all the players, all the guys that showed up, the parents. It's been a lot of hard work. It's been a long road this season, but I think it's well worth it, you know, the lessons that the young men learn playing football, which is a reason a lot of the parents bring them out to us to try to teach the kids discipline, you know, to try to keep the kids occupied, keep them from getting in trouble. So that's why we do this. All our coaches are volunteers, and it's not been easy, you know. Sometimes we have stadiums that don't want us to, allow us to rent their stadium. We had a few times, we had not been able to get access to public parks and things like that. So, you know, we'd like to use this opportunity to ask for some assistance from the city council, if we could maybe get some sponsorship for some of the kids that can't afford to play, or we could maybe, I don't know if the city has a lot of land that y'all could allow to us to use for a football field. That would be nice. But I also want to thank the president of Cougar Sports, Mr. Maurice Lawrence. Without him, none of this would be possible. (applause).
I'm literally speechless, guys. Usually, I'm the guy that talks all the time, and Coach Tony and Coach Stafford and the rest of the coaches there just let me talk. But I'm speechless, guys. I really appreciate you guys for acknowledging us. Like Coach Tony said, it hadn't been an easy road. There's been days we all wanted to pull our hairs out. But we just reflect on back why we're doing this and what is this for. And as I feel like, you know, as long as we could teach somebody, change somebody, we did our part. So we're looking forward to hopefully working with the city, building more kids and young men, and hopefully this thing will keep on rolling on. Again, we thank the city councilmen, as well as all elected officials for this opportunity, guys.
I'm a present, I have young men with lapel of hands today and thank them for their service. And like they said, community, we've got to get behind our kids. This is our future. You have the parent support. That's very important. But this is very important that these kids and these coaches, I want to thank you all for volunteering. They're not paying, they take their time out of their schedule to make sure these kids have an opportunity to be positive in the community, and it's a great thing. And I'd like to say to all the kids, y'all continue to dream, stay positive, stay in school, listen to your parents, and I promise you can go along where we might be looking at our next NFL player or coach or if not, CEO. I want to thank you all.
Mayor.
I'm amazed at how well behaved these children are, aren't you?
That was adjourned to.
That's coming from a school teacher.
Correct. Correct.
We wouldn't be amazed.
You're so correct.
We'd be amazed.
Good job, Coach.
I appreciate you, man.
Yes.
Now, it's back to the books, fellas.
Thank you.
Before I turn the meeting over to the capable hands of our mayor, I would like to recognize Representative Jimmy Eldridge, who has given to each of the city council members the Tennessee Blue Book. We always appreciate getting that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Eldridge, for doing that. Appreciate all you young people being here this morning, being a part of this meeting, being such a huge part of Jackson, Tennessee. I appreciate my Vice Mayor stepping in, standing in the gap for me while I welcomed about 1,200 Baptist preachers to our city. And I promise them that you all will be on your best behavior this week since they're here and present in our city. So I appreciate the Vice Mayor stepping in. Our next item on the agenda is to, we're under item six, to hear from Chamber of Commerce Economic Impact Video presented by Lori Nunnery. Lori, if you'd come up. Thank you for being here. We have some special guests, I think, supposed to be with us this morning. I know we have Henry Turley, Healthy Communities, back here, just standing to be recognized, Hal Crocker, and I think we have President David Rudd, University of Memphis. Thank you for being here today. We'll hear you later in the presentation. Thank you all for being here. Let's give them a hand for being here. Now, Ms. Nunnery.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor and Council and distinguished guests. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. It's kind of hard to follow an act like that. It's great to see what's going on in our community. You know, it is an incredible honor to be here with you today as you can consider innovative steps to move our community forward. And I want to thank each of you for your support over the last nine years while I've been in the tourism office. It has been an incredible experience. And just recently, we were, I serve on Governor Haslam's Task Force for Tourism, and we were sitting down as kind of our farewell luncheon where he thanked us for our service. But what I told the governor was, by having the opportunity to sit with our peers from across the state, it changed how we did tourism in Jackson differently. It was an eye-opening experience. It was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and for that I am so appreciative. It changed how we did business here in Jackson, and it's going to continue to change because now we have those networks set up where we can communicate and learn best practices. Nothing is quite like sitting next to our friends in Memphis and Nashville and Knoxville and seeing what they're doing and learning the best steps for moving our community forward. So in that vein, most people know that our office is the destination marketing organization. It is an organization that promotes a town, city, region, or county in order to increase the number of visitors. It promotes the development, marketing of a destination, focusing on tourism marketing services and sales. And that in a nutshell is what we do. Our mission is that the Jackson-Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau, otherwise known as Tourism, otherwise known as Visit Jackson, Tennessee, seeks to positively impact the local economy by increasing travel-related spending in the county. We provide quality services to the visitor and the local hospitality industry, and we assist in the development, preservation, and expansion of the county, region, and state tourism products. Now, before I lose everybody and you guys go to sleep, there's a couple of things I need you to know. We are a government agency set up by an act of the Tennessee Legislature. We are fortunate to be housed inside of the chamber. We rent space there. But we are a separate government organization. We are governed by a board of five that is appointed alternately between the city council and the county commission. Those commissioners are Jimmy Exum, Esther Mylum, Jane Alderson, Tom Hensley, and Dave Bratcher. And those positions are set for five-year terms, and they rotate on our board, and then the city and the county alternate between appointing new commissioners for us. We are funded primarily through the hotel-motel tax. Out of that tax last year, it was nearly $1.8 million for the hotel-motel tax. Forty percent goes to the city's general fund, forty percent goes to the county's general fund, and we operate off of the remaining 20%. We make great strides in tourism, and I appreciate your support in allowing our budget to increase and no longer be capped at the $193,000 mark. It's made a tremendous difference in what we're doing in Jackson and Madison County to let the rest of the world know what's happening tourism-wise. As I say thank you for the additional funding, I think the one thing that I need to remind everyone, as much as we are appreciative of that funding, our challenge is we are competing against communities, comparable communities, like Paducah, Kentucky, like Tupelo, like Clarksville, Tennessee, with budgets of over $1 million and averaging over nine people in staff. We are much appreciative of the funding that we have, but just know that the playing field is not level when we talk tourism. But we're going to continue to work, and we're going to continue to demonstrate what we're doing tourism-wise to show that it's a good investment of dollars, because our goal is, is to bring more money into this community as a revenue generator, so you can do bigger and greater things, that you can look at innovative practices about, like what's coming in front of you here in a few minutes, and examine those and have the funding to do it. That's our goal, is to bring more money into this community. So I'm going to share with you our economic impact on tourism video. I hope everyone's awake, because I think if you're not, you will be. to tourism in Madison County alone. It showed how many thousands of visitor guides we send out. It didn't show you all of our Visit Widget app downloads for Visit Jackson, Tennessee, that's continuing to just be incredible numbers that we're seeing. It doesn't show you that the events calendar on our website, the people look at that, out of the top 25 pages, that's the top 15 pages of where people are going on our website. There's a lot of stuff going on for tourism, and when I give you the reports each week, that's just, or each month, that's just a smidgen of what's going on. Know that we're working hard. It was funny, last week, we had the opportunity to speak at the chamber's quarterly membership breakfast, and Kyle and Ryan kept referring to us as to the tourism team, the tourism team. And I said, you know, for seven years, it was a one-person office. We moved it up to two people, and that changed our world. And we're looking to add in another staff person to the office, and we're continuing to look to do great things for Jackson and Madison County. We supported over 25 events last year with our two-person staff. That wouldn't be possible without the partnership with the city and all of the folks here in Jackson. This is a community to be proud of. We're continuing to do great things across this community, and I invite people to come along and join with us. If there are any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. All right. Any questions from council as far as the video or numbers?
One quick question. What did you see on the hotel-motel tax? What percentages?
Sure. Out of the hotel-motel tax that's collected, 40% goes to the city's general fund, 40% goes to the county's general fund, and we operate off the remaining 20%.
So you only get 20% of that?
Yes, sir. And that varies from community to community across the state.
Most communities, Tupelo, we get 100% of that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? If not, Lori, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate everything you do and your staff of one who helps you. Y'all do a great job, and we appreciate everything you do for our city. Going down to item eight, next on the agenda, consideration ordinance under second readings. Consideration ordinance to rezone property located along 700 block of Old Humboldt Road from RS1 Single Family Residential District to RS1 PRD Single Family Residential Plan Residential Development District comprising 7.57 acres, more or less, submitted by Ryan Richardson, surveying services on behalf of Zico Properties LLC. Council has approved this ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion for a second.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second ordinance on the second reading will be consideration of the ordinance to rezone property located along 1188 block of Ashport Road from RS1 Single Family Residential District to RS2 Single Family Residential District comprising 20.32 acres, submitted by Mickey Evans, Clay Williams, and associates on behalf of Lisa Manis, the Freedom Trust. Council has approved this ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion from council.
I just want to ask this question. I didn't ask it on first reading. What's the difference in the RS1 Single Family Residential and the RS2 Single Family Residential? What's that difference? You probably answered it at the other meeting, but I don't remember.
Good morning, City Council, Mayor.
Good morning.
The only difference between RS1 and RS2 is the, they're both single-family districts. One of them just requires a little bit narrower, a little bit narrower lot, a little bit smaller lot, but they're both single-family. But the plan that they have for this development, the lots well exceed the minimum, so it doesn't really change anything. They just need a little help on some lot widths, so that's why they went to RS2.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have questions from council? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item three, second readings also, consideration ordinance annex and ordinance to zone an area referred to as SR223, generally located on the east side of SR223 south of Lower Brownsville Road comprising 5.48 acres, more or less. The proposed zoning for this annexation area is I-2 Light Industrial District. Council has approved this on first reading. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Turner.
Yes, sir.
Do you want two separate motions on annex and zone?
Then we need two. We need two.
It might be better.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and handle the ordinance to rezone first. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Questions from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And also the ordinance to annex the area. This would be on second reading also. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Under item nine, new business, consideration resolution, supportive proposal for the construction of two public, two new public schools. We asked a five-member committee together from this council to study that proposal. And if you would, I'll turn the meeting over now to Councilman Dodd, who headed up that committee, and ask also, while he is bringing the council up to date, ask Dr. Vicky Lake to come up, if she would, to join in the discussion, answer any questions. We have our financial advisor here, whom the council requested to make a report, and I think you all have his written report, but he is here this morning to answer any questions. Dr. Jones, you here? Come on up. We're not going to let you get by without coming up, Dr. Jones.
First of all, I should thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to serve on the Education Committee, and thank to the committee that worked hard, had some good times. We talked some good information, bad information. But we're here to, for a golden opportunity for us to be able to serve our community, and I think it's an opportunity for us to bring our community together. We hashed out some issues. I know it's a financial issue that we're looking at, that we'll have to face, but it's an opportunity that I think we cannot pass up at this time. I'd like to elect Dr. Jones to speak first, and then we can go down the row here.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I will be brief, as I've come to you guys a few times. I will say that this has been a very long process. I do believe that it is a great opportunity for our city and county to come together in the name of children. I also fully understand and respect how tough a spot it puts you in, because you do not have to. But it says a lot about you that we gave you back to this room, that you're willing to listen. We did approve a 10-year capital plan in our last board meeting. A few highlights of that plan include K-8 in the Northwest, the new JCM Junior-Senior High School, also the new Madison on the campus of Lambeth. Also, we're looking to expand our Montessori program, and we're looking to determine where that will be. We also will be looking to expand our pre-K center. Early foundation is a huge part of what we're doing, and we're looking at possibly expanding that in Melissa's. And then the last piece of that is our workforce development center. So all these are coming toward moving our school system forward through this 10-year capital plan. That does not include our academic plan, which I don't want to bore you with that. But we are here today, and of course, last night, the council, County Commission, voted 20 to 1 in favor of supporting the public private. And while others are going to come talk about Madison, another huge part of this is JCM, and the opportunity to really invest in a part of the community that I don't think has been invested in, in this way, in quite a bit of time. And the two are linked together. And I know we'll be talking about Madison today, but I don't want us to forget the other piece that is tied to that. So I come to you as humbly as I know how, and I know we're in your hands, and I respect your decision, and whatever you decide to do, we will work with it. But we are in need of your support and in need of your help, and I thank you.
Now, you want to introduce our financial advisor to the council and let him kind of go over the printed document that we all have a copy of?
Right.
The item on the agenda is the resolution that Stan and I have prepared. But precluding that, we were asked by the mayor several weeks ago and by several of you council members, especially Ms. Foote, that you needed further information. And when we come to you on the budget presentation, we're always looking at a very contrite range, you know, the current year and the past two years or so. We haven't really done a financial analysis projecting out over 10, 15 years, and that's what Piper Jaffray, Jonathan McCoy is here. Piper Jaffrey is a full-service investment banking, a bank, investment bank, and they do specialize in public finance. In 2016, they were voted number two in the country for senior managed underwriting. That's where they underwrite bond issues and loans, et cetera. More important to us, in 2016, they ranked number five for financial advisory. So I'd like to introduce to you Jonathan McCoy out of the Memphis office, and he's going to take us through some areas that possibly we haven't looked at ourselves, not just the council, as to where we are going in the next years. And the key is the 20 to 24 area time period, because that's when our debt is really concentrated. So without further ado, I'll let Jonathan go ahead.
Morning, Mayor, City Council.
Morning.
My name is Jonathan McCoy. I'll take for the introduction. We've been kind of charged with taking a look at the city's financial and kind of debt capacity in consideration for the proposal that's in front of you on the school financing. So what we've kind of done is looked through a financial review going back to 2009 on the city's financials, looking at various revenue line items as well as expenditures to kind of gauge their year-over-year trends, things that are changing over time. And one of the things that we're kind of looking at is trying to use those historical results as a expectation for future results. I'm not sure. Is that, Lori? Okay. So as we've looked at the historical results, we, again, we've used that as a foundation for us to make assumptions for expectations for future revenue growth. for us to make assumptions for expectations for future revenue growth, future expenditure growth. Um, and we have kind of, in, in conjunction with that layered-in expectations for future to capital outlay plans, and how that would be funded, whether that's through fund balance, or revenue growth, or the need for additional debt, uh, issuances for long-term capital projects. Uh, so, so with that, um, again, this, uh, we've, we've developed a model, and within that model, we have, uh, looked at current budgeted twenty nineteen results, uh, and using that as kind of our baseline going forward. Um, and, and what we'll talk about here is that with, you know, looking at the, uh, city's general fund balance, it remains very strong at approximately twenty-four, twenty-five percent of the city's expenditures. That is above the fund balance policy for the city at twenty percent. So, there's about a cushion of just over three million dollars that you're above your minimum policy statement. Uh, and, but if we look at going forward, the expenditure growth, as we'll see, has kind of exceeded revenue growth over the last couple of years. And if we were to project that forward, then there's the possibility i-if expenditures exceed revenues of, of, of possibly having some fund balance draws if there's not any changes. And, um, so I'm just looking through, uh, bottom of page five here. So, we're also looking at when we consider the new debt that's possibly coming on or could come on, how that would also impact, uh, the, you know, the, the expenditure and the general fund balance. And, um, I wanted to point out the bottom bullet point there. In two thousand and seventeen, a report by S and P rated the county, uh, this, I'm sorry, the city as a double-A rating. It's one of the highest ratings available. It's very strong. But what they, um, they generally have in their notes, what could cause your city the, the rating to go up, or what could cause it to go down. And so, in order for it to go up, they would expect to see improvements in the local economy, but then also, uh, you know, budgetary performance and, uh, uh, strong reserve levels. But on the flip side, what could cause that to go down would be, uh, continued draws on the fund balance and, um, you know, addressing the, the page you go, or, or, or funding capital, uh, you know, through, through excess revenues versus, versus debt. So, we're gonna, um, just kind of skim through the next few slides, but, uh, just wanted to show on, on slide six, we can kind of see the historical general fund and debt service fund results. And the, the main thing to note here is that, on average, expenditure growth has, um, has exceeded, uh, revenue growth in certain periods. And so, we can see in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, those bars are a little bit higher, and that is a function of the, uh, sales tax agreement with the county that, that resulted in an increase in the, in the budget by about six million dollars. Uh, and then on slide seven, we just kind of break down, uh, the various, uh, you know, taxes and sales taxes and, and the percentage of the total budget that that is. So, it's, it's hard to see on the screen, but in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, with the result in the sales tax increases, you know, taxes and sales tax revenue are approximate equal amounts, uh, in the budget line item. But then looking at, um, to that, the six million dollar increase in two thousand and eighteen, there was, uh, moving to, uh, slide eight now. In two thousand and eighteen, there was approximately three million dollars in operating surplus before any transfers to, uh, capital outlay, uh, or CRA funds. And after those transfers, there was about, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer, uh, or balance increase into the general fund. However, as we look at the two thousand and nineteen budget, uh, just due to salary increases and, uh, things beyond the, the city's control, such as healthcare costs, that, that have gone up, uh, there would be a roughly balanced budget, a few hundred thousand dollars to the positive. Uh, I have been told in, in communication with staff that there was a one-time expenditure of about seven hundred thousand for, I believe, a, uh, payoff of a police building. So, if we look at that seven hundred thousand, assuming that we don't have that cost going forward, plus the three hundred thousand roughly that was in excess, then, then going forward, we would expect about a million dollars every year, assuming revenues and expenditures kind of grew or declined at the same, same, uh, rate of change. Um, but if we, looking at, uh, slide nine now, this is, uh, again, just some assumptions based on our review of historical results. Uh, the one thing I can say for certain is if we were to look back on these results five years from now, they're probably not gonna look exactly like this. Um, they are, uh, based on events known to us at this time and, uh, the best assumptions that we can kind of look at. So, with, within our model, we see the kind of line items for revenues, license and permits, the intergovernmental, which is your sales tax for the most part, between the county and, and other state income. Uh, what we've done is gone through line item by line item and reviewed that historically and, and looked at things that we know are gonna be phasing out, like the hall tax, and how that's gonna, you know, change going forward, and have made, um, you know, assumptions for growth on every single one of those, uh, revenues. Some of them that are, you know, minor cha-, or minor, uh, line item amounts, we've kind of bundled together. But, um, when it's all said and done, it's a roughly two percent, just over two percent growth year-over-year for now through the next, uh, through two thousand and twenty-four in the period that we looked at. However, on the expenditure side, we've gone through, and, um, the last two years, it's been about twelve and a half to thirteen percent, uh, growth in expenditures on the governmental side. Again, most of that has been, um, healthcare costs or, or, um, salary increases. But then again, on, on public safety, public works, we've, we've kind of looked at the historical trend and, you know, applying the different growth rate percentages there, the average would be about three percent. So, if we go back to the comment of a million in revenue from two thousand and nineteen that would be available, if we start to grow revenues at two percent, but expenditures at three percent, then with, um, by two thousand and twenty, there would be an operating surplus of about two hundred and fifty thousand. But then, in two thousand and twenty-one, we start to see the declines of, um, of, of expenditures exceeding your revenue. Um, and if we forecast that same trend line out by two thousand and twenty-four, there would be a, a deficit in, in the operating, uh, of about three million dollars. And, and so these results are for any transfers to, um, you know, needs for capital outlay or, uh, other, you know, transfers to CRA, et cetera. So, um, so this is just kind of one of many scenarios that could take place. Again, it's just kind of based on our best assumptions at, at this point, and discussions with staff on their expectations for things that are known to them that are coming online in two thousand and twenty with, um, taking over, um, a new animal shelter and a city court that are gonna be expenditure costs that are going to be coming online that, that the city hasn't had, you know, historically. So, so from there, we, uh, look at, uh, other impacts that would have a draw or, or need funding, and we kind of look at capital outlay needs and any pro forma future debt. And historically, the capital outlay needs for the city has averaged about seven and a half million dollars in total. And with the new reappraisal, there's now about a million and a half dollars per year going towards the capital outlay fund. And, uh, if, if the needs for the next five years total about seven and a half million dollars in expenditures, that would require about six million dollars per year in debt financings. And so, the next thing we've done is look at, okay, your current debt structure, which is on page twelve. You can see existing debt service in the first column, uh, is about ten million dollars a year, and after two thousand and twenty-four, it declines significantly to, uh, around four million dollars per year. Uh, and so, what we've, what we've projected then is a six million dollar, uh, bond issue, you know, starting in fiscal year two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-four. And in order to kind of structure that around the existing debt service, we've assumed, uh, a twenty-five-year, uh, final maturity. The city's historically done twenty years, but that's just gonna give you a little bit of capacity, a little bit more, um, flexibility in those next couple of years. And the other thing we've done is assume that we do, uh, interest only, so we're not paying back any principal for the first three years. And, uh, you can see that on, on the proposed principal and interest debt service structure. That would increase your debt service, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four by about a million seven to, uh, a total debt service of about two million two seventy-five. Now, this assumes, you know, kind of some pro forma interest rate assumptions at a, you know, where we scale up that interest rate. We're assuming a three seventy-five, uh, three point seven five percent interest rate initially, and that kind of goes up every year by a half a percent, and we kind of cap that at five percent in total. Uh, so, so things to take into consideration here is that, um, it would, it would be a, an increase, but, uh, there's, um, excuse me. The, the current, uh, you know, debt service would increase, as I indicated, about a million seven in two thousand and twenty-four. And we looked at the city's current debt policy. It was put in place prior to the, uh, taxes that go to the capital outlay, but the policy, uh, as we understand it, is, uh, a twenty-six percent is the rate at which your debt service, uh, you know, divided by your, uh, property tax revenue, which includes pilots and, uh, IDB revenues, uh, can't exceed, can't exceed that number. So, currently, uh, based on fiscal year, two thousand and nineteen debt service, we're just under that, about twenty-five point six seven percent, but that does not include in the pilot and in the revenue numbers that million five that goes to capital outlay. Again, that policy was put in place prior to that, uh, the, the funds go to capital outlay, so it may be something that needs to be updated. Um, so, if we then, uh, look at the debt, another item to consider is, even though we're adding six million per year, you currently have a very, uh, very fast debt acceleration. Uh, and so, on, on page twelve, there is, uh, kind of total principal outstanding that takes into consideration the additional debt coming on, as well as the debt coming off. But the debt that's paid down is, is faster than the debt we're taking on. So, at, at no point, based on the six million per year, uh, issuance and additional debt, would the, the debt burden to the city taxpayers ever increase. It actually goes down over time. Even though we have a, a debt service increasing, it's just because of that, uh, acceleration of your existing debt profile.
Can I ask a question very quickly?
Yes.
At, at, at this point, um, I guess my first question is, who are you retained by? Are you retained by the city, CRA?
No, retained. That was the motion made in the November first Subcommittee, and I went out and hired their services.
She's retained by the city?
Retained by the city.
Okay. Um, and you, you mentioned, um, an important piece of this funding is revenue growth, correct?
Um, we, we took the position of looking at the city's current financial position and where that would be in a couple of years to determine what revenues would be available, uh, in addition to the revenue growth from, uh, you know, property taxes
Sure.
or sales taxes, and, uh, what would be available to fund not just this project, but total expenditures, but other capital outlay as well.
And, and we know too, that there are several ways to grow revenue, uh, taxes being one.
Correct.
Um, and, and you, in, in your model, um, six million dollars worth of debt, um, in two thousand and twenty-four would be necessary to fund the project?
Uh, we are, we're looking at a six million per year from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four that, um, while the analysis shows, you know, five million for, um, public works and, you know, some other auxiliary additions there, it could be, uh, we could assume that that six million is used for any project within the city, and, and the numbers would still kind of align here. So, it's not necessarily focused on just six million for, say, schools, or just six million for, um, for any other capital project. We're saying if, if the total debt needs were to amount to, you know, s- you know, six million dollars, this is what it would look like. So, these numbers would, uh, indicate that i-if you needed to raise more funds for the school and capital outlay, then, then you would, your debt service would be even higher than this.
If I could interject just a second here. Their financial analysis was setting the school proposal aside. They're looking at this as our normal, uh, operating. And what we have done, um, Ernest, we're normally paying right now like nine, eight to nine million dollars we're paying in principal on our debt. So, we have tried not to borrow any more than that. We've tried to borrow tit for tat, so to speak. So, you know, in the years twenty twenty through two thousand and twenty-four, you can see we've got like ten million dollars, and we would be paying off more debt than the six million dollars that we would normally borrow, if that makes...
It does. And, and ultimately as well, um, we would either have to restructure, refinance debt down the road as well?
That's correct, and that's one of the things that we address, is that there is, uh, two thousand and nine series, two, two thousand and nine series outstanding. Those bond issues, uh, actually mature in two thousand and twenty-four, and they come up for early next year, opportunity to refinance that debt. And so, we have looked at opportunities to not only refinance it, but possibly restructure that, uh, to where we could, instead of it paying off in twenty-four, we pay it off in two thousand and twenty-five. And that would open up, uh, some, some flexibility and, uh, allow for, depending on where interest rates go, but it gives you some, uh, some breathing room on the, on the debt side during those couple of years.
Does it, does it beg the question, um, you mentioned our bond rating and how solid that was? Does it beg the question that we should go out into the market ourselves and, uh, borrow, borrow the amount, uh, have a much lower, uh, payment per month, per year, and, uh, pay for this, uh, proposal or this project, uh, ourselves outright?
So, we, we haven't really gone into the consideration of, of which structure would be a better alternative, whether that's the...
And maybe you're gonna get to that.
Right, whether that's the...
Couple, couple slides ahead, I'm sorry.
The, the private, and, and there are some considerations that we have at the end, but, uh, whether it's a, a, a better alternative for you doing it alone or, uh, funding it through a partnership, uh, there's some considerations and questions that we have at the end that we'll address. Uh, but, uh, this kind of looks at a kind of base case scenario on if you took on this much debt, whether that's in the form of a lease payment for the partnership or in, in, um, a, a true debt service cost on debt you're taking out of your own.
Are you gonna discuss the new market tax credit side of this, or is that another person that's gonna talk about that?
Uh, we're not discussing that at this point.
We're gonna have Ms. Lake, Dr. Lake, bring that up. Jonathan, let me, let me, let me ask you this. In your projection of revenue, did you factor in the fact that through our agreement with the, with the county, the sales tax agreement, which sunset in twenty-seven, between now and twenty-seven, there'll be roughly forty, forty-eight million of additional revenue coming into the city? Did you factor that into the revenue?
We, we did take that into consideration. We have not shown the, anything pro, past pro forma, past two thousand and twenty-four. Um, getting that far out on other revenue assumptions can, you know, the, the further you go out, then the less assurance that we have in, in those results. We have taken that into consideration, the six million dollars that would come in and, uh, additional in two thousand and twenty-seven. Uh, there's also, uh, you know, about a six million dollar decrease in debt service after two thousand and twenty-four. So, so after, you know, your real concern is now through the next five years, uh, of getting past that, once you get past that, then, you know, everything, assuming there's not huge expenditure growth or some sort of recession or, or major decline in other revenue sources, then, you know, after two thousand and twenty-four, uh, it's, there's a lot of breathing room for the city.
Yeah. So, it dropped now until two thousand and twenty-four, we're looking basically at ten billion a year in, in debt payment principal, roughly.
That's correct.
And then after two thousand and twenty-four, that, that will drop off to roughly about four million.
That's correct.
Okay.
This is, Mr. Terrell, and this is not just talking about schools, this is talking about our total debt service. Is that not correct?
That's right.
That's right. And any, and, and within the six million, we could, we could look at that as, uh, you know, additional debt that's for schools or for other capital projects. Uh, it's, it's really a pro forma on if, if the city did six million per year the next five years in debt.
It'll be the city's choice on how we expend that six million.
That's correct, yeah, yes.
And I guess this is an hour question, um, it's relative to payment in lieu of taxes, um, for the lift and, and that area. I know the hospital just made that purchase. How much, how much in revenue approximately will we, will we be foregoing, uh, in, in, in that particular area?
I'm not sure I understand your, uh, question with the word foregoing.
They bought the lift, the hospital bought the lift.
The lift, the lift has changed hands of Dusty. Those tags in lieu of taxes will, will fall off, and we, I guess we have last year's projections. Well, we haven't received any, uh, payment in lieu of taxes from the lift. That's been under the umbrella, along with the, um, apartments down there. The apartments come off in three years, and then we will receive tax revenue. I can tell you that the homes that were built on Morgan Street and East Darlene's, those homes have already started hitting, uh, the, uh, tax rolls. And in the District One that we're talking about, uh, and Stan can attest to this, we looked at the TIF, and we just have preliminary numbers from Francis Hunley's group, but roughly this year, the, um, TIF is growing ten percent. And when we show a, an analysis here in a few minutes, we're looking at a fifteen percent growth once the apartments and the other, if we would go forward with this. growth once the apartments and the other, if we would go forward with this, and Lambeth area develop, which Mr. Turley and Mr. Crocker are already developing segments of, it's gonna increase. Now, whether it's gonna be fifteen percent, that's judgmental, but I can tell you, this year, the growth is ten percent, just with the homes along Morgan Street and, or East Arlene's and in that general area.
Okay, but Al, again, since the hospital bought the lift, they will not be paying property taxes on that.
To my knowledge.
Now, I had done a little research, and my research told me that we'd lose about four hundred thousand in property taxes.
We won't lose it because we never had it.
Are you just, I just want to clear that up.
We never had it, though.
Okay.
We won't lose it, it's just that we won't gain it.
So they never paid property taxes, is what you're saying?
Right. Because that was built with, and Mr. Crocker and Mr. Turley can correct me, or Vicki, that was built with new market money funds also.
Okay. Okay, one thing, Jonathan, I think I'm right, Superintendent, that this would, this construction would begin in 2020, am I right, or, or 2021?
The construction would be.
Construction would begin in the spring, late spring of next year.
Of next year, okay, all right, thank you for that. So my question to you, Jonathan, is, did you say a few minutes ago, I think you did, that in 2021, our expenditures would exceed three percent of our revenue?
Yeah.
I wrote that down, is that correct?
That's correct, if, if there's, if there's expenditure growth of three percent year over year compared to revenue growth of two percent, then by 2021, on your operating budget would, you know, your, your expenditures would exceed revenues.
Okay.
And Ms. Studd, I'd like to point out that there is one plus, and I'm not saying plus or minus, we don't make that first payment, it's called rent or fees or whatever, until July or August of 20. So we're not talking about something that we're gonna start paying for right away. I don't know when the construction begins, but we start paying in 2020 for seven years. And during that time period, the TIF, the CRA has committed to contributing, and if it were a fifteen percent growth, you could see out of our four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar payment, they would be contributing rounded twenty-five thousand, and then as you get to later on in the period, the sixth, seventh year, they would be committing to almost half of our payment. But then there is the balloon payment. I'm just addressing here the so-called rent.
I'm a little confused on the six million per year. I was under depression, what you were saying, that's kind of what we've been spending historically on capital outlay, so that's what we need in the future?
That's correct, assuming.
But that, that's not including this additional nine or 10 million we'd have to come up with for the schools.
That's correct, so we could look at it as either the city forgoes certain capital outlay, you know, and pushes that out beyond 2024, and uses that six million dollars for, you know, the, the debt service associated with that for the, the lease payment or for debt financing on a school, or this would, if we were to continue to do the capital outlay now, it would be in addition to that.
Where I'm confused is, if we've been historically been doing six million, then we're gonna have to give up something to be able to use part of the six billion to pay the note of the debt service or whatever.
That's correct.
Okay, and my other question is, historically, the six million that we're adding per year to debt service, in addition, I know we're paying some off too, but you're saying that would push us over our debt limit without even entailing the school situation?
If, if you continue to increase six million per year up till 2024, there would be some constraints on the, on the current debt limit, based on the calculation of not including the one and a half million that's going to the capital outlay fund currently in, in the taxes.
And a question for Al, was that debt limit not originally twenty-five percent? Do we not have to go up on that once already?
We did, we did.
Okay.
Now, the one thing I want to clarify, Randy, is the balloon note comes out here after the seven years of the so-called rent or fees. So Jonathan's six million, really, as you stated, is our normal capital. But unless we go out right now and finance it on our own and decide not to go the public-private plan, we aren't seeing any increase in debt principal until we would face the balloon note out here in 2027. Then we would have to decide how to finance that over twenty-five years, whatever. But his six million that he's using is our normal capital expenditures.
Got it.
But we don't have to consider, and I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or another, I'm just telling you, the balloon note is not in the numbers on his page twelve, it's not in the numbers because it doesn't come up until the end of the, right here, the twenty-five, twenty-six period. These are just numbers here, this ten million is paying off existing debt. And what he's saying is, we would be paying off more if we paid ten million a year and spent six million on capital, obviously you're gonna pay down, so then all of a sudden here, and it's not realistic that we won't borrow more monies in this time period, but if we did not borrow more monies, we would drop off from ten million to four million.
And, and basically, it's just ultimate opportunity cost, there, there, if we did this, there'd be some things we possibly could not do.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's right.
And these, the estimated TIF dollars, and Al addressed that a second ago, we're, we are, it, it's an aggressive fifteen percent.
Right.
Above the ten percent that we are.
Well, it's fifteen instead of ten.
Okay.
But I mean, you could, if, in your head, you could say, okay, we're only gonna grow seven percent, and you could cut these numbers in half.
Right.
But they have committed seventy-five percent of whatever that.
Whatever they are, right, and, and these are just projections?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, one last question on the, on the debt service, the six million you're doing, that's assuming we don't have anything unusual come up, like needed a new fire station or?
That's correct.
The Omen Arena needs to be redone, or that's assuming that we don't have anything, like we almost always do every year, same thing.
Right, and, and that's why we've picked up a, you know, six million dollar number. It's really, I mean, seven and a half million total, total capital outlay, one and a half million is funded with, with tax revenues that come in each year. That doesn't assume any incremental growth, so we could look at, you know, you know, this is kind of getting into the margins there, but that's six million or seven and a half million for whatever costs may come up for long-term capital projects.
And Randy, this is something that you had proposed two, three years ago. For the first time now, we do have a funding source for capital.
Correct.
Because we kept our dollar ninety-six rate instead of the certified dollar eighty-seven. And surprisingly, I have not had more than ten calls from anybody complaining about this increase on their total tax bill, because it was based on some people whose appraisal went down, some went up. What I'm looking at is that most of it was in the commercial and industrial portion of our tax input. But I have surprisingly, and I'm, I'm pleased, because I hate to answer all these calls when people are a little bit upset, but when I explain to them that this is for basically roads and streets repair, infrastructure, it seems to be something that people realize we need.
Al, Al, you didn't get any calls because they were calling me.
Well, they called me too, but you may have gotten more, okay.
I had a couple of questions for Dr. Jones, I don't know if this is appropriate time for that mayor or.
Sure.
Do we need to keep going through? Dr. Jones, you know that the funding responsibilities with the county, that, that's state law, correct? And while, while I do appreciate the work in the project, you're not an expert in new market tax credits.
Correct.
Not at all.
Right, and so in a large part, this, I won't say this is not your proposal, but this is, this is, goes beyond the school proposal, this is a redevelopment proposal. Would you agree with that?
I don't necessarily agree with that, I'm tasked with finding a way to get projects done in our system, and the opportunity presented itself to look at a different funding source, and so I'm simply kind of the conduit to bring that funding source to this body.
I understand that, and we appreciate that. In a typical, in a typical capital project to build a school, how, can you give me an idea how that process works? I guess my concern is the, the procedure that this proposal came through. It appeared that it wasn't as properly vetted as it could have been. Would, would those capital projects start in a large, in a long-range planning committee, move through a budgetary committee, move through curriculum and other committees, and then be presented to the full school board?
In terms of?
Of just a, a, a capital project for a school system?
Yes, and it did go through those, those steps.
Okay.
Now, the difference in this, the difference in this project is that we're not going directly to the county with this, this is a public-private partnership.
I, I understand that.
And so the bidding process and all those things did not come into play with this project.
Okay, do you understand my question?
I do understand your question.
Okay, then, this was presented to the school board on what day? This proposal, and, and it went through several iterations, correct?
Yes.
Because what, what was being proposed today, was it the initial proposal that the school board voted on, is it?
The school is different, what the actual school is gonna be, but the amount of money, the actual proposal of building a school in East Jackson has remained constant for about six months.
Okay, and again, I guess my question is, in a normal process, would that have gone through a, through a long-range planning and other committees before being presented to the school board?
Yes, and it did.
And, and, and those, those committees made a recommendation to the school board that, that we proceed with this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Jones.
I'd just like to say, Dr. Jones, could I just say one thing? You have worked very hard, this is an outstanding proposal. You're one of the first superintendents to really have this kind of vision, I appreciate that. And thinking of my constituents now, I did hear you say loud and clear that you want to do something with Melissa's, that it's in your long-range plan, the tenure plan, that you do want to perhaps have a pre-K there, you're looking at that possibly. My constituents are very upset still about closing Melissa's a community school. I appreciate you bringing that up, I hope all my constituents are listening to that. Of course, that's not what we're voting on today, it has nothing to do with that. That may be down the road a piece, but at least my constituents are hearing that, and it might, it might change their mind about some things, so I want to thank you for that.
And I think the important part of that is too, and thank you, Councilwoman, is we're not voting on that today. Has that been brought to the school board?
What, Melissa's?
Yes.
Yes, it's been voted on, it's in the tenure capital plan, and we're gonna have to pursue it.
Okay, Dr. Lake, you wanna break the numbers down for us?
Thank you, thank you, Council, for allowing us to come and present before you this very important project for our community. We've been talking about a public-private partnership, and I want to, we do have Henry Turley and Hal Crocker from Healthy Community LLC, and we do have the president of the University of Memphis here, Dr. David Rudd, and I would like at some point for him to come up and talk about how important that is to the university and the growth of, of the community as he sees it. But the collaborative partners in this are the City of Jackson, Madison County, the Jackson Madison County School System, the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, Healthy Community LLC, and the University of Memphis Lambeth. Remembering back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, when we got the legislature to add Jackson to the Community Redevelopment Act in Tennessee, joining Memphis, we created our board through the city council and the county commission, and our job since then has been to fight blight and slum in the city of Jackson and, and have it stable and, and grow in the neighborhoods that we felt were transitioning. This area, which we call District One, and the Community Redevelopment Agency, is where this, both these schools will take place. This particular school that we're coming to today for, Madison Academic High School, we're proposing that it move to the former location of Epworth Hall on Lambeth Boulevard on the campus of the University of Memphis Lambeth. It will expand to six hundred students, they will have dual enrollment opportunities with the University of Memphis Lambeth, so these students will be on a college campus, attending some college camp, classes. The University of Memphis and the Jackson Madison Academy School System will have a shared use agreement for the library, the learning lab, the auditorium, the sports fields, and the student union building, so that, they will work that out. As a part of this project, the Jackson Madison County School System will guarantee that twenty-five percent of the students in the community Montessori school in that neighborhood will live in that neighborhood zone around the school. The school system has also said that another component of this project is after sibling preference for admission, twenty-five percent of the students admitted to Madison Academic High School will live in this neighborhood zone. This is very important to the stability and the growth of that neighborhood. This is how we will attract families back to this neighborhood, because in theory, their child or children could go to the Montessori school from K through eight, change schools once, stay in their neighborhood, and go to Madison Academic High School. That's what we all want, is neighborhood schools, and this gives our community a first step toward that.
Dr. Lake, if I may, and, and that is a concern, was that, was that decided by the, the redevelopment agency or decided by the school board?
School.
The school system decided that?
Yes, sir.
What was, what was the, what was the rationale for that, Dr. Jones?
That was a discussion. Can you hear me?
Yes.
That was a discussion with the mayor.
Pardon?
That was a discussion with the mayor and the city, it's part of this plan.
Okay, then, did you have input from the school board or, or other educators relative to that, or was that just a unilateral discussion with you and the mayor?
The board had to approve this.
Okay, and I understand that, that they've approved it, they, they, they approved that at their first or second meeting, correct?
Yes.
And what, what particular outcomes are you looking at in guaranteeing those twenty-five percent slots, and, and why is it twenty-five percent, not fifty percent or other percentages?
That's the percentage that was a part of the discussion, so that is not, at one time, the Montessori school did have a zone component before it moved a few times.
Because they're not zoned now, correct?
They're not zoned now, no.
Uh, do they have school buses there?
No, they don't.
Okay, then, so every child that attends the Montessori school, their parents have to drive them there?
That is correct.
Okay, then, and, and do you see how that's, that could be looked at as unfair to poor children, to not have that opportunity?
I can, yes.
Okay, additionally, parents have to drive their children to Madison, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay, there's no school, there's no school bus that can take a child to Madison?
That is correct.
Okay, um, do you see how that could be looked at as unfair to a poor child?
I don't understand how that has to do with us making, we now have a zone component, so in theory, you will have busing that will now go to the Montessori school.
Okay.
And the vast majority of the children that live in that zone now could benefit from that busing.
Okay, what percentage of students in our system are, receive free lunch?
Roughly, well, now everyone receives it, but those that are identified, it's about seventy percent.
About seventy percent, so seventy percent of our students are below the poverty level?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you see some of my concerns?
No, I don't.
Okay, um, and, and i- if you don't, that's fine, but it, it appears that some of this is, maybe some unintended consequences, I will say that, are favoring certain students over others. I will say that, are favoring certain students over others for educational opportunities, especially educational opportunities at higher levels. And that's one of the, I think, one of the downfalls of you coming to the city council. I jokingly told someone, that's why I ran for city council, not county commission. So I wouldn't have to pepper you with these questions and these concerns because I consider that the county commission's job. But you're here before us today asking for money. So, you know, if you would, I don't apologize for that and don't apologize for the questions.
No need to.
We appreciate you being here. But those are some concerns. I don't know if this is a proper form for those to be dealt with, but those surely would be taken into consideration when someone has to vote on these issues. And Dr. Jones, I must say, until we can figure out how to educate poor children here in the city of Jackson, buildings are not going to change some of that. And I just hope as we move forward that those things will be taken into consideration and we can see where our priorities are. It's been said that much of, or many of our priorities are enticing or inviting certain segments of our population back to the public school system. Well, I think that as a priority is misguided, and that's just my personal opinion there. But again, the beauty of public education in public schools is we have to educate every child that shows up. And I think if we keep that in the forefront, we'll move forward in a large sense. And I didn't mean to preach or get on a soapbox about that. But you answered my questions relative to that, and I hope that can be looked at.
Conversation I had with Dr. Jones, as far as the percentage came from conversations I had with the members of the CRA in trying to maintain the level of redevelopment that we have enjoyed for the past five or six years in that district. The district, if you'll notice in your resolution, the exhibits that are attached will go beyond the CRA District One into the hospital area because we see, the planning department and MSF see that perhaps as a transitional neighborhood. Could go up, could go down. We certainly do not want to see it go down. So that's where that conversation started as far as mandating that at least 25% of those students reside in that district in order to attend community Montessori and then go from there four blocks away to Madison when they head high school.
Councilman Brooks, if I may respond, when you, a couple of the requirements for new market tax credits is that the project that you are doing are in census tracts that are impoverished. And so the census tract where this project is located is impoverished. So in theory, some of those children that you are talking about live in this neighborhood and certainly then will be able to get to their neighborhood school. So I, you know, it has, in a new market tax credit, it has to be an impoverished neighborhood and it has to be a project that qualifies. And education, and improving education is also an eligible project. So this census tract and this project makes us qualify to pursue new market tax credits.
Right, and that's part of your application, from what I understand. And I do understand, and that was going to be my question to you, is which census tract this was?
It's in seven, I believe.
Okay, and we feel that a new Madison will enhance the lives of those children?
Yes, because Madison has no academic requirement to get in.
Okay, I thought it was a lottery, I thought it was a lottery, Dr. Jones.
It is, it's a lottery.
Right, okay.
But 25% of the children after the preference will come from that neighborhood.
I understand that.
Which ensures that some of those children will be able to go there.
But there is a requirement to stay there.
Yes, there is a requirement to stay there. But can I continue with explaining how the new market tax credits?
Sure, absolutely. I apologize for interrupting.
What the new market tax credits allow us to do is, at the end of the day, it gives you a 20% equity in the project. So the total cost of the Madison Academic High School is about 11.5 million. And then at the end of the seven-year period, what you will look at your balloon note, as y'all have been calling it, is 9.2 million.
Sure.
Now, the capital lease payment will be 499,833 a year. And again, the CRA has committed, as Al has talked about, 75% of our funds to help go toward that annual payment. So it will be reduced somewhat through the years. When we started the CRA, we bid out our master developer for both District One and District Two. And Healthy Community LLC was chosen as our master developer for District One. So they will be, as continue what we've worked with them, they will be the developer on this project. And they will work with the school system on designing the schools and constructing the schools as a part of this project.
So that's a private investment from the CRA?
Yes, and we, Sun Trust has given us a letter of intent where they are agreeing to finance this for us. And they are actually agreeing to go out and get the first set of new market tax credits committed to us.
So it's a private investment, but it's going to be, the debt will be guaranteed by the city and county, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for Dr. Lake then.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
Here for me. Good morning, Ms. Lake. I'd like to call Mr. Crocker up to elaborate on a few things along with you, Ms. Lake, if that's all right?
That's fine.
Al, you okay to come up? Any other questions for Dr. Jones or a financial advisor? Y'all good there?
I've got one more for Mr. McCoy, if you don't mind. In the projection that you did, did you include the additional $500,000 expenditure per year as we go along? Or is that not included in here?
It's somewhat built into the $6 million debt service payment, but no, there's not an additional line item for the $500,000 in addition to...
So, I mean, when you're showing the expenditures that we're spending each year and projecting that to go up 30%, whatever, this half a million is not included in that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a Mr. McCoy question before you leave. I thought you were going to touch briefly on other options for the city relative to, on your slide number 16, school proposal considerations. And I had asked a question earlier, you know.
Yes, I believe some of those questions...
Why do this when we could fund it in a different way?
Right, I believe some of those questions may be answered here shortly based on Mr. How's comments. But in general, it was looking at, you know, what's the opportunity cost to do this on your own? Away from partnership, what would that require? As I understand it, the developer could come in and start this project fairly soon. And if we look at, if the city was to go forth on a project on their own, what does that entail? How long does that take to go through the procurement process? Would the school be comparable? What's the, you know, the cost for the city to do that? Is it above or below 11 and a half million dollars?
Right.
Those are just questions that we don't have the answers to currently.
Okay, that wasn't a part of your analysis?
Those are just general thoughts to take into consideration as we kind of consider this proposal.
With just your expertise in the industry, just say, if we were just to fund this with a loan from a bank, you could imagine what that interest rate may be, let's say, over 30 years.
Correct.
Could you just give some basic numbers relative to that? Maybe Randy can help, I don't know.
Again, that would come down to the scope of the project if we're looking at...
11 million dollars.
11 million dollars. It would, it would depend on how it's financed, whether that's through a 20-year, 25-year term.
Sure.
But again, that would be, I would think, looking at the proposal that's in front of you, the ability to go forward with a project today versus funding that. I presume that could take, you know, several months to, a couple of years to finalize this scope of the project, the bidding, and they start looking at inflation costs and interest rate risks.
Let's assume that. Yeah, I understand. Let's assume that it would take some time. But I guess my question, would you have any just preliminary numbers that we could look at?
We have not looked at, you know, two years from now, if you were to take on 11 and a half million dollars, how that compares to the all-in project that's presented as we're still kind of gathering information on the full proposal from Healthy Community.
Thank you, sir.
Before Jonathan leaves, though, I would like him to present a chart or a schedule that is not going to make us happy. Page 14, because I think this is key, Ernest, to what we're talking about.
Yeah, and before we get to 14, again, just to re-highlight some information that was on 13.
13, okay.
And we'll get to 14. If we just look at the current projections for debt coming on in the next couple of years, with the rapid amortization that's currently on your debt structure, we start to run into possibly debt capacity limits based on the city's policy of a 26% limit. But that's just in the next five years. So that's some considerations. And going to 14, if we look at, based on the assumptions of a 3% expenditure growth and only 2% expenditure in revenues, coupled with the increase in debt service, we're looking at by 2024, a $3 million gap in revenues to expenditures plus the $1,007,000 in debt service cost. So based on kind of a pro forma projection on what the value of a penny would be, we would expect that there would need to be about a 15% raise, or I'm sorry, increase in the tax rate to be able to meet that deficit.
Could you kind of slow down just a bit and repeat that relative to what we would look at? What looked like in 2024, your prediction is that we would run at a $3 million deficit?
Yes, before, that's assuming a 3% growth in expenditure cost and a 2% growth in revenue cost, I'm sorry, revenue growth. If those two were to, you know, match each other, then, you know, we wouldn't be kind of having this conversation. But this is just pro forma expectations.
I understand, and we appreciate it.
So it could be that, you know, by the time we get to that period of time, there's no deficit because we've had, you know, expenditure growth that has matched revenue growth.
And can you go back to slide 13 and just elaborate on however, Max, you say, given the rapid amortization of the city's current debt structure, total debt outstanding would not accrete, would not increase above current levels. However, Max annual debt service would increase approximately 1.7 million to over 12.275 million.
Yes, I'm just going to revert back to page 12.
Okay.
Kind of the first column there is existing debt service. That's around 10 million, 10 million five per year through 2024. Based on the principal that is paid off every year, that principal that's paid off exceeds the 6 million per year that we're projecting to increase. However, when we layer in that additional debt service cost of that 6 million, we still have the fixed cost of the 10 million five that's existing. So your total principal and interest debt service going forward is going to increase until the principal's paid off. But because we're paying off more principal than we're issuing every year, the total debt outstanding actually goes down every year.
I see, okay, thank you.
All right, I think I had the floor, but I just about forgot my questions.
I bet you'll come up with it.
It'll come back to you. You have a question, Mr. Crocker?
You wanted Hal to come forward?
Yes, yes, please.
Could we, yeah, could we make a seat for Mr. Crocker, if you would? And then if we need you, be sure and sit close in case we need to call you back up. Thank you, Eric, thank you.
Dr. Lake, Mr. Crocker, good morning. With respect to the community redevelopment agencies, District One and District Two, these developments and these school projects are concerning District One, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We're all concerned about stabilizations of neighborhoods. I've looked at the proposal regarding Jackson Central Mary, which the county commission voted 20 to 1 to finance that project. We're looking at Madison this morning. But what I have not heard, I've looked at it in some handouts and correspondence that I've seen about the present Madison High School. What is your plans for it? Because we're concerned about empty buildings in our neighborhoods. I've seen it.
Yeah, we've got some plans for it.
Yeah, I want to hear them.
Okay, Hal, you want to, or I can do it?
Sure. But to be honest, we haven't spent a lot of time on, we haven't spent a lot of time on the Madison Academic because of the, you know, project they're working on going forward. However, we've been involved for some time in working with a grant team that included representatives from Lane College, representatives from West Tennessee Healthcare, the CRA, and some other nonprofit groups about repurposing the JCM campus before the idea of the schools coming back. So we looked at the opportunity, once the Madison Academic was relocated to the University of Memphis campus, that we could continue to pursue that opportunity that we were looking at before. We were working with a national organization, it's Robert Woods Johnson Foundation, and they have a sub, kind of sub organization called Invest Health. And Invest Health is about trying to bring about better health outcomes for the citizens that live in the community around and a facility that is dedicated to just making the quality of life for those citizens better. So we were looking at doing it over there on the JCM campus before. So we were looking at moving that initiative to the Madison Academic. There were several components to that. One part was looking for a senior center that was directed toward the people that lived in that area. But to build something as nice and as attractive and as exciting as we could to attract people from all over the city to come there. Use that as a leverage to make things happen in the neighborhood. There were also some components for health education classes. There was some interaction with the African-American Chamber of Commerce to provide offices for them. There were some ideas for workforce development with Lane College. So it was a work in progress. And then as we started working on the school project and looking at opportunities for JCM to return, we kind of put that on hold while we pursued that.
Very good. You did mention a senior activities center.
That's right.
Which the city badly needs. Is that the case with, if this passes, that Madison would become on the first floor? I was reading that somewhere.
That's right. We would pursue that. We made a presentation, for about a year, we were going to meetings around the country to talk about projects with other communities that were looking for the same kind of initiatives to make something positive happen in the more distressed and needy neighborhoods in their cities. We did a presentation on ours, on our ideas in Phoenix, and then we made them again when we were in New Orleans. And they featured our ideas in one of their news releases because they thought it was a positive thing that could come to fruition. As part of the education that we went through, they also educated our team on funding opportunities. There was a lot of discussion about the opportunities brought about through new market tax credits, but also some other foundational grants and stuff that we could seek out for that project.
This Private Partner Act, Dr. Lake and Mr. Crocker, we have to get, as a council, get a better understanding of it and with respect to the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agencies. I don't think we fully understand the tax abatements and taxes and where they go.
Well, from the tax incremental financing?
Yes.
Well, we receive those funding every year.
Yeah, I know.
Our master developer does a budget every year. And those funds go directly back into infrastructure in that district. It goes to give incentives. We've given some forgivable second mortgages to incentivize people from moving into that area. We've funded the dog park a small amount to keep it and add some benches and equipment down there for them. But all that money goes back into that neighborhood.
Now...
The county has...
Excuse me, what's that?
The projections that you have for going back into the tip... The projections that you have for going back into the TIF district on the school, these are projections?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For each year, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and the county has pledged their, the county will also set up a district-
Yes, they're joining the TIF, you know, when we originally did this, they did not.
Okay.
They did agree last night to, that was a part of the motion, to join the TIF, and again, seventy-five percent of their funds will go for the infrastructure and paying, seventy-five percent will go to their debt service, and the remaining twenty-five percent will be designated for the area around the new JCM.
Okay, so this sheet that shows TIF proceeds, CRA contribution, and CRA remaining TIF funds, all of these funds will go into the project?
The remaining funds are the funds that we had, the TIF is going to start over.
I got you.
And so those other funds will continue to go into purchasing property around that area, around the land with the neighborhood.
So remaining funds aren't funds that are going to remain with the city? These are funds that are in the TIF that will be used?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And relative to new market tax credits, I believe you explained a bit about that, is it unusual to use these tax credits to build schools, Hal?
It's not unusual, but when they first started the program, it was not a prevalent thing. It has been becoming more and more common for it to be used in a school project.
Okay, I had to discuss this project with many people from across the country, and even educators were surprised that we were funding building schools in this way.
That's right. The first, when we first did the project at the lift, I had not heard of that for public education. I had seen it for some, actually, a couple colleges had used it for some additions at that time, but I hadn't seen it for public education. When it first came up, when we had our first conversation with Dr. Jones, actually, Dr. Jones is the one that brought up the idea of looking at some, you know, there's some special bond issues and some other things that might help make it possible to do something today rather than wait two, three years under the county agenda. But we did do some investigation, and we did find out that schools are qualifying use of the funds, and this year, there are several public school projects across the country that are looking at this.
What are some of the factors that would make your application strong when this is presented to the federal government?
Well, you know, that's a great question, because we're talking here today about the University of Memphis and the Madison Academic, that's a portion that we're asking the city to participate in. But our proposal is, is an umbrella proposal about both projects. Because what's important is, you know, there's some cost involved in what you do in order to get the new market tax credits, and so the size of the project has a lot to do about the affordability and the full leverage being available into the project at the end of the day.
Okay.
So, but what plays a part is the location, you know, does the census tract qualify, you know, that's important, but beyond that is, is what is the depth of that qualification? You know, the truth is, the district that both schools are in have pretty compelling demographics. There's a, the poverty is great. I believe that we're, you know, a lot of this area in the East Jackson community is in the sixty percent or below of median income. But, you know, we talk a lot about the district over there in the South Atlanta, and I think there might be a misconception. If when you leave here, you'll get in your car, and you'll drive down Hatton Street, and you'll drive down Gordon Street, and you'll drive in the south neighborhood of Lambeth. I don't think you're going to find a district that in some way discriminates against half our population in Jackson. I think you'll see that the need there is just as compelling, the need for the children to have a good place to go to school, and the idea that they may be able to walk to school instead of getting on a bus to go to school or drive across town, I think is a positive, not a negative. So we certainly have children in the area that are low income already, or we wouldn't be able to do this in the first place. But when we're, in answer to your question, what makes our opportunity to get the credits good, there's a lot of factors in the neighborhood, but because of, and health outcomes is an important conversation that you have, other assets and opportunities because of the poverty there, the greater story, looking at ways to provide connectivity, you know, the idea that you might walk to school is a positive. We look at that for both areas. When we look at what we're going to do around the JCM campus, we're looking beyond just plopping a school down there in an area where school needs to be. We're looking for, how does that impact the neighborhood? What are the possibilities for growth for people to decide that they want to move to that area, to build a new home in that area? What are the opportunities for people to walk to school? What are the other things that may happen in that area that may boost economic development because positive things are happening there? You know, what we take is, the difference between us and just getting an ordinary builder just to go through the normal process and build a school, is we look beyond the construction of the school. We look at the neighborhoods, we look at the assets, we look at the partners, like Lane College being there beside the new school that we're intending to bid. We look at opportunities in vacant land. When we did our profile for the area that surrounds the University of Memphis campus, there's three hundred and eighty plus or minus vacant lots in that area. Because people have abandoned their homes, or homes have been torn down because they were in such distressed condition, because they just didn't want to live there anymore. That's part of what erodes the tax base. So when you ask about, well, how did we come up with the idea that we're going to make a portion of the attendance at the Montessori School, and Madison Academic, a neighborhood school, it's part of our profile, and we're doing the projecting, the growth in the neighborhood. If we have good schools, and we have places that people can build a house, then they will build that. When they build there, they'll increase the tax pay. When they pay their taxes, that will help pay for the school. I mean, it's a pretty simple idea. So there's no real agenda, except the agenda to get people to live in the neighborhood where the new schools are, get them invest there, pay their taxes there, and help pay for a good opportunity for their children to have a better out education.
And I appreciate that, but in answering the question relative to what are those factors that will strengthen your application, and I guess my next question would be, when would that application be submitted?
Well-
Well, it's a little different. I mean, we use the grant as a, you know, kind of concept as a comparison, but it doesn't really work exactly like that. Across the country, there are lots of nonprofit organizations that already have experience and have had an allocation in place, and they're going through the process to apply to the federal agency that issues the allocations right now, and say, and some of them may be, well, the main recipient of those are big banks, SunTrust Bank expects to get an allocation, Goldman Sachs got a hundred million dollars last year, Bank of America, City Blank, they all participate in the new market tax credit, and they have some to benefit their clients who are serving the need in distressed communities. Beyond that, new nonprofits across the country that have a special mission apply for allocation too. Some are involved in education, some are involved in health to underserved communities, some are involved in different kinds of economic development, and they end up getting an allocation, and then they look for a place to place that.
Okay.
So our-
That's not this situation, though?
That will be this situation.
Okay.
That'll be, that's always the situation for new market tax credit. So that's the way it was done. Jackson Walk, we have a model because we had some success. We made our, we developed our story, we went out into the marketplace, we said, we need help for this project, and our project will be a success because people want to invest, agencies want to invest in successful projects.
Let me ask the question this way, Hal. So, and you answered my question, in packaging these two school building proposals, that would make the application more strong than if, than if you only presented the JCM piece?
That's right.
Well, and let me just say this, Councilwoman, I've been working on this application, I'm on my second draft of it.
Okay, I bet you have.
So, we packaged it in really two broad concepts. One, framing it as this is where schools go, good schools go, children and families goes, just like what Hal is saying, about how it will draw people back to the community. But we've also framed it in the tenure plan that Mr. Jones has presented, that these pieces are a piece of a larger picture of the way that we want to educate our children here in this county. And that goes to the school in the south, the new, the new early college high. It goes into all of that, and this is, these are important pieces to get that tenure plan going.
Sure.
So it's been framed, and that's why we have a great story, because we have an approved tenure plan, and we have experience in developing this neighborhood, and think we have a great plan on how to bring people back. So it's a big picture.
Sure, and that's very exciting, because-
It is.
Up until now, we've not been doing a very good job of that, and I applaud Dr. Jones and the work of everyone, but there's a lot of work to do, because it's very embarrassing to go across the state of Tennessee and say, you're from Jackson, and they talk about our school system, and where we rank, and how, and the job we're doing. I guess my next question is, is Hal, will federal one oh eight dollars be used at all in this project?
Now, I don't know if I can speak to that, but now, as far as the one oh eight dollars that were available to the District One have already been used.
All just expanded.
They were used for infrastructure in District One around the Jackson Walk area. Now, I guess you need to talk to Mr. Hunt, and, you know, he's the-
District Two.
Developer, master developer for District Two. I think there are some remaining funds in the one oh eight-
There are some remaining funds in District Two.
And potentially, you could qualify that to use for part of this project.
Okay, and this could be jumping ahead, and I'm going to be brief, I feel I've hogged up too much time possibly. But do we know how many square feet are proposed for the Madison project?
Um, yes.
We do, I can't recall. I don't know if you noticed, my hair's kind of white, and I can't remember.
Somebody way off mine is doing some things, too.
The Madison is sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two square feet.
Sixty-seven thousand, six sixty-two?
Thousand.
A square foot? And all of that is new? It's not remodeled?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be expanded to six hundred students?
Yes, sir. Expanded to six hundred students.
Does that include a cafeteria?
Yes, it does include a cafeteria because of the federal food programs, they have to have their cafeteria.
Mayor, thanks, I may? A couple of questions for Dr. Lake and Mr. Crocker. If the county had decided last night, they think this is such a great proposal, they could have done the whole thing themselves, and you still could have got the new market tax credits and gone forward with the situation, could you not have?
We did not present that to them.
I know you didn't, but I'm asking the question, if the county decides if they wanted to do it all, they could have done it, and you wouldn't lose the new market tax credits, or wouldn't screw the, you know, possibility of events being up, done or anything, had the county decided they were willing to fund it all? And I don't want to, I just want a yes or no answer or not, whether probably not they would do that.
Sure, sure, they can do whatever they want. Now, it would be different, it would be a different deal there.
But my question is, is that you don't have to have the city to participate in this for you to be able to get the new market tax credits, for the funding to go through, all those kind of things, if the county decided they would do this.
But the story sure is better.
However, however, the, we met with the county, you know, half a dozen times, different leaders from the county, and I guess, I guess you understand that the incentive for the city to participate was key to their decision. There, you know, we would have had this same conversation we're having today about whether it was timely, whether they could afford it, but the city's participation was key for them making the decision to go forward. They felt like the opportunity to have the city participate gave them a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do this. It made the idea that they could pay for one school, although their investment is more, theirs is about twice what the city's investment is for the school that they'll be building. But to have the city participating made a difference to them, and if y'all don't do this, then they're not going to do anything. Now, what their reasons are, we can all speculate on that, but that's the deal. They were interested because the city might do.
So they're saying the improvement that's being done to JCM are not worth it if we don't participate?
I think the, I think that they may do something sooner or later, I don't know, but the timeline was to do something now.
I guess my disappointment is the dragging the city into this to start off with, since the schools are a county function, and you're all aware of that, that-
Well, and we understand that, and I guess I shouldn't really be debating this in some ways.
No.
But I guess, Dr. Rudd is here, and one of the reasons that we're pursuing this is because of the opportunity that's very special that we have to work with the University of Memphis.
I do not deny this is a great idea. I'm a hundred percent in support of it, I'm just opposed to the city paying for it, it's the county function.
So the opportunity for us to craft this and have some input as to how this would happen was the price of admission. So we, the CRA and our team, along with the school system, think that this is a real opportunity for the city to jumpstart additional development in that area, which we think over the long term will bring significant returns. Because, as you know, for the last twenty years, we've had steady migration, or maybe it's the last forty years, we've had steady migration out of the center of our city to the fringe. Now we're having the, you know, the steady migration from the fringe into the other counties, for a variety of reasons. They leave the hole behind for the city to pay for, while growth continues out on the outer rim. But it costs the same thing. It costs the same thing to take care of an empty neighborhood as it does for a full one. It costs the same thing for police protection, for fire protection, it costs the same thing to run the street lights, the infrastructure's already built for the sewer and the water. We have the, we have a capacity of another fifteen to twenty thousand people in the core of our city that were once inhabited, there aren't anymore. Someday, you got to figure out why that is. We're talking a lot about infrastructure, about how it's been neglected and how we need to spend some money on it. Well, if we're going to fix it, wouldn't it be not nice if somebody lived there to enjoy it? And I'm just saying, this is an opportunity. The schools coming back is an ingredient that's key to people choosing to live inside our city and to, and to raise their families there. We just want it to be an inviting place for people to live, and that's the key for the environment.
Sure, and to be fair and for the record, that's why the county receives a larger amount of sales tax than we do, because they are burdened with funding, funding schools. If I can-
Okay. We give, Mr. Ben, Rudd, can you please come up? I mean, while he's coming up, as I sit here and listen, as we talk about, the most important piece to our community is education, and basically, right now, you know, we turn this thing into, I know, education is the key to making success and making our kids be able to be successful. But as I listen, it's sad to say that we started here in 2018, and I think Dr. Jones is trying to do what's best for education for all kids, not one particular kid, it's not black or white, whatever, I hope that he's doing it for all kids, not just white kids, he's trying to do what's best for all kids. And I hope we continue to look at the most important pieces. I know to find this piece that we kind of look at and seek in the city to be able to participate in this plan, I think it's a great plan, but I don't want us to continue to divide our community and continue to talk about, you know, black and white, you know, you're not educating the black kids. I think if that's a part that we're missing, let's work with Dr. Jones and fix that part. We're going to do new schools, but let's continue to work on that part also, but we need to do what's best for all kids.
Dr. Rudd, it's great to have you in Jackson, we're honored with your, with your visit here, and appreciate you coming up.
Good to be with you, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Rudd.
Well, I would offer a couple of thoughts about this. One, the future of our campus in, at Lambeth is very much tied to the neighborhood, is very much tied to the future of the neighborhood, in terms of our capacity to build a residential experience at the University of Memphis Lambeth. We have invested in that campus, I think to date, we've invested since the original, the original assumption of the campus, and by the way, thank you for your support for that original process, we've invested about ten million. We're getting ready to invest another six million in the development of renovation of Sprague Hall this coming fiscal year, that's already been approved, that money has already been allocated. The following year, we will do another building, the building next to it, we'll do another six million. This school really helps stay- This school really helps stabilize not just the neighborhood, but helps us build a residential base for the campus. That ultimately is the future of it. We'd like to see it as a dual enrollment high school that allows us to sell the health sciences for those students, bring them into the university quicker in the process, retain them as a part of the University of Memphis, and help to build that footprint and the identity for that campus as a health science campus, which makes the most sense for the future of the campus.
Thank you, Dr. Rudd. We certainly appreciate your willingness to continue to build the campus of U of M Lambeth, and appreciate everything you've done. Any questions?
Raff, I would like to, if we could, we have got a lot of information today. If we could table this into our December meeting to let everybody get an opportunity to continue to look at the numbers that were presented to us today, and maybe come back in a December meeting to seek...
I'd second that.
Okay. We have a motion to table with a proper second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote. The motion is to table resolution.
Motion passes with five members in favor, three against to table.
Okay. Motion is approved to table until a December meeting. Thank you all for being here and being a part of this. Thank you, Dr. Rudd, traveling to Jackson.
Okay, item, item two, on a new business, approval of proposed sale of city-owned surplus property, land located at 136 Ferry Street, map 078G, group K parcel 015.00 to Geneva Elmaize for $500.
So moved.
We have a motion to, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
Councilman Buchanan, are you going to vote on this motion?
The vote is unanimous.
Item three is approval by law, approval of bylaws of the Jackson Educational Foundation, joint foundation put together by the city, county school board, and the county commission. Is there...
So moved.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a second.
I had a question, and I don't know if they're connected, but if we're tabling the vote on the school proposal, should we table this vote as well?
I'm sorry, I was reading, what was the question?
They're not connected.
They're not connected at all.
That's my question, then. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Nita, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item four, we have a firefighter's assistance grant to be approved, the council.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, on board appointments, we have Jackson Recreation Parks Advisory Board, reappointment of Sam Joyner.
So moved.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Under Jackson Housing Authority, reappointment of Jimmy Cole.
So moved.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And under Keep Jackson Beautiful Commission, the appointment of Robin Chance, replace John Griffin, reappointment of Marcus Chandler, reappointment of Scott Parrish, and reappointment of Norma Bundy.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Under the Hatchie River Regional Library Board, the appointment of Glenn Christian.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Under the advisory board for the ned, the point Glenn Thesmeyer, replace Wes Henley.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is...
Harvey?
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Nita. Thank you, Councilman Buchanan. Education Foundation Board, Sean Daly.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Under budget amendment, Ms. Bell.
You have one budget amendment before you this morning. This is for the replacement of roofing on the Carnegie Center in the amount of $6,000. Bring that budget to $24,950. No draw on fund balance due to the fact that revenues exceeded expenditures in the city budget.
Move the approval.
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Before we hand the last item, let me just make an announcement and note that I've just been brought to me. We've had Dr. Joe Rowland and also Jonathan Harland pass away last night in our city. Both of them, we know and love, and request that the council be in prayers for their family during this time, Dr. Joe Rowland and Jonathan Harland.
Ms. Chairman, I also want to add, Dr. Seal Lipson, the daughter of Reverend W.K. Seals. You may see his picture on the plaque out there, and she spoke here a couple of years ago in his honor. She passed away at her funeral this Saturday at the Ren at 11:00.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Buchanan. Last item, consideration invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion, second. Council, discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.